Okay, so we'll call this meeting to order and then do we end this meeting and start the next?
We'll just call the public hearing to order.
Okay, so we'll call this meeting to order at five thirty-eight, or no, five thirty-three.
Mine says five thirty-two.
Five thirty-two, whatever you want to put down, five thirty-three, um, thirty-two. And then at six, we will have the public hearing. So, leave it at that. So, the first order of business is our minutes from last?
I make a motion to approve the minutes of Friday.
I'm not sure if I can second not being here last time, but I think I can.
You can, you can even vote the minutes if you want them to be true.
Yeah.
Okay, one second, all in favor? Okay. Financial statements.
So, there's eight warrants presented for signature totaling sixty-five thousand seventy-one dollars and nine cents. No major changes since our last meeting, everything appears to be on track. Still monitoring accounts closely as we get towards the second half of the year. Happy to take questions if you have them. And then we'll finish up the budget process this evening as per the timeline.
We were, we were back a while, a couple meetings ago, we had like a ten thousand dollar line item for maybe the Blue School and then they got knocked down to seventy-five hundred. You remember what that was? I mean, I tried to look in the new budget to see what line item that could have been, but...
So, I don't think that comment got in here, we did talk about it at the last meeting, but I didn't see it in the minutes.
If you have it, that's no big deal.
No, no, I did.
Yeah, we, didn't we knock it down a little bit?
We're, yeah. Yeah, so we're bringing it down again for FY twenty-one and what I did find is that it seems to be, at least in the past few years, perhaps since you moved out of that building, kind of a catch-all for unforeseen expenses and/or some administrative such as the copiers and things like that. So, I will be working to move things to the proper line item. We necessarily won't reduce any more than we have going into FY twenty-one, but getting stuff in the right spot.
Okay, that's fine, I was just trying to figure out.
Where is it in the budget now? Like which lines, so we can make sure on that.
I thought it was way, probably a bit of that, I thought it was.
It is, it's in the four thousand codes.
Central office, uh...
It's on page five, maintenance of equipment, under function code forty-two twenty, towards the bottom of page five. It has a sixteen thousand dollar budget and we've only spent two thousand with a thousand in convert, so, um...
Say forty-two twenty?
It's on, on page five, nope.
Oh, you're looking at next year.
Yeah, okay.
She asked about this year.
Okay.
Did you ask about FY twenty or?
No, I was asking about the budget.
Yeah.
So, I think I found it under maintenance of buildings on that same page.
Yeah.
Yeah, it should be under forty-two.
It says central office repair and maintenance and it's eleven thousand, like right in the, well, the second section on that page.
Yeah.
Can you see it?
Building repairs, supplies.
Maintenance of buildings.
Yes.
Four-two-two, or two-two-oh.
Okay.
And it looks like we've spent well under eleven thousand in the past three years.
Right.
And when I talked to Don, he said that they used to have something that all the schools had and that it sounds like this just was left and used for various purposes, not for the purpose that it says it is.
But we still have central office repairs and maintenance, would that, would that come out of, um...
That doesn't come out of the...
Wouldn't that come out, still come out of this, this line item versus being a Frontier building? If there's any maintenance to be done in any of the offices in the future?
No, it's all would be considered Frontier.
The central office bill goes through Frontier's budget and there is a line item for central office expenses.
Okay.
It is, but there's not a maintenance of buildings or anything like that.
So, that's just been absorbed by the school itself.
It'll be interesting next year if we can keep an eye on that, what was paying out of it exactly, 'cause if...
Well, we know, that's what, that's what she's saying, she'll, we'll move that out for next year. We just didn't want to just erase it and then all of a sudden, you know, not know if there was other expenses going to...
But I think you're also thinking from the other way, which is because the central office needs...
I'm just thinking if it, if we don't need to spend eleven thousand, we could drop the percentage, maybe the next year for, from the budget, yeah.
Yeah.
I mean, you're going to budget eleven thousand dollars for this, this coming year.
Right, it's a good chunk of money that we should figure out what we want to do with it.
We can reallocate it, just instead of increasing a maintenance budget or whatever next year, you take it from there and there's no increase to the budget.
Just a, just a thought, that's all. Thanks.
So, any other questions on the current budget?
We're good on, on our regular budget and stuff right now.
I mean, I'm sure I didn't miss anything.
Yeah, well. That's sure you've underspent right here.
Trying to fix something.
That was, that was her first year, so she'll be good.
Followed a directive.
We both were, well, that's good, but...
Well, I made the statement, we, our votes were not as well accounted.
You know, you want to be more confident in what you're spending.
We were conservative in all buildings and so, you know, Frontier's E and D was higher, other buildings, you know, had a little bit more safety.
And any school choice update or anything on that question? So, public comments, we don't have any public here yet.
Usually we have Mary.
We don't even have Mary, she's elsewhere at the moment.
Yeah, she's in Florida. If we needed to get a full tour across the hall, we could go select some basketball.
So, we'll move on to the budget, this is just the final discussion within the school committee, right? Or should we just wait?
No, no, you should go, just do it.
Just go to the other ones?
I would just go spool the hearing, have the hearing. We, I mean, for those watching on the camera, we went before the select board and the finance committee.
And had a good meeting?
We had a good meeting, talked about it, so if they don't show it, I would not be surprised because they, they gave us the...
And that was taped also at meetings, you can find that.
But I would go straight and take care of the policies.
Okay, let's go to the policies then.
So, um, this is, so, for, make sure you're not confused. Two things happened, so you have, this is, you have a reading of the first set of five, or six, five policies in front of you, um, last meeting. And so, tonight you'll be voting on those. You will also, in your packet, were sent the next set of policies, which I will go through separately, okay? Last night, Frontier just grew them as a group and voted all along, just because they're very straightforward policies. They, I'm, I'm saying this for your own experience, you're welcome to go one by one and discuss each one and that kind of stuff, but you're looking at the educational equality policy, the equal education opportunities policy, the homeless students enrollment rights and services policy, the educational opportunities for military, military children to follow the DESI compliance, the educational opportunities for children in foster care to also follow the DESI compliance, so, so moved.
To vote for all at once, yes.
That takes care of that. So, now I will discuss the new ones.
The new ones.
The new ones are actually boring except for... The new ones are removed.
Depends on, depends on who you talk to.
It's true.
We'll talk about that later.
Yeah, the basic, so, you've got this policy newsletter mailed to you and in the first part, there's a list of policies that they, they made a recommendation to remove because of redundancy or are handled elsewhere or are just the law. And so, the first few policies, the basic instructional program policy is to be removed in its entirety.
Do they not work, either what it was redundant of or was given this way?
No.
Yeah, that was my question.
It seems a kind of big thing to say that anymore.
It would be helpful to know what...
Why, do you think what it says here is important?
That we should be teaching those things?
Um, probably, you know, if you go get the, uh, the research. Yeah, geez, you're right. I can go get the research of what the, exactly that is replacing.
I mean, things like the kids' insurance programs, I mean, when I was a kid, we were able to buy alternative insurance for like three dollars and fifty cents for the, for the year. Imagine that has something to do with that and then the other one, if you give a solicitation, you can't...
Yeah, those things kind of make sense, it was the basic instructional program that is questioning.
So, these ones that we're suggesting to remove, is that suggestion from the MASC because they are...
They basically said that any staff have found the following policies to be redundant or unnecessary and we will have them removed from our reference meeting.
It must be in another policy.
So, I can find out.
So, they're removing them from the manual, but they will remain in the law.
So, they're saying, no, their manual follows the law and they help us keep in compliance with the law. So, I can, for the next meeting, I can contact MASC to get where the, I can, this is just the reading, so I, as we asked the question.
Or you could send out a, you know, a...
And I can send you prior, yeah, so you have an understanding of what that's for.
That was the only one I was curious about.
So, together with, as Bob had mentioned, the guidance program. You know, we certainly aren't getting rid of our guidance programs, but again, going up with the recommendation to remove and then student gifts and solicitations is now basically ethics law. And then the last one is the one that did have conversation last night at Frontier, but basically there's a lot of changes and this is per recommendation of DESI.
The public comment one?
The public comment to make sure we have a tighter public comment policy. Now, just note that everything in, if you don't have a color copy in front of you, everything in red is the new, everything in black is the old, everything that's crossed out was the old is crossed out. And it sounds obvious, but we got a look at, we got a look at views last night that we were changing the amount of time people were allowed to speak. It just kind of, it firms it up if you were having, um, I guess, you know, it hasn't happened a lot, but if you had continual large amounts of speakers and you're unable to do business, you want to be able to fall back on a policy that says, listen, we give, you guys have business to do each, each meeting and sometimes the point is made.
Makes sense to me.
Makes sense, but there are three spots where the wording is a tiny bit different than what was in the MASC one and I didn't know if that was on purpose or not. Because I, I got them in the...
I got them from the MASC. In the mail, the ones you compared.
Yeah.
Sure.
It's probably, I'm just probably being picky.
Well, Frontier's asked me to talk to the council about giving, having some clear language in there that the chair has the ability to waive this policy for any public comments. If you have one person in the audience, they talked about signing in and that kind of stuff. And so, just having general language that you're waiving this unless there is a, a number of people who need to speak that may interfere with the, you know, not interfere because you want that as part of your business, but me, you understand what I'm saying?
Take over the meeting.
Yeah, 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 and so, because if it says you should sign in and do other things, we have one beer in here with one simple thing, it may be more than, it may be a small conversation, you want to be able to keep that informality if your chair decides to keep it.
That's a good idea.
And so, that's what they asked me to look into for the...
And as long as the person that's next is going to read the same letter that was formulated for the group that might be trying to make a point or something, which has happened somewhat recently.
Yeah, and this is not, I just want to be, be clear, this is...
I'm not trying to get rid of...
Right, this is not going to, this is not a reaction, this is not a reaction to any recent public comments either. This, this just came through with everything else in this project, you know what I mean, so...
It's just defining what...
There must be districts where this is more of an issue, I don't think our district has this issue.
I'm sure the same way that it's addressing things.
We won't mention Amers.
So, yeah, I mean, there's, there are somewhere...
We don't have this issue.
There are, there are districts where, you know, we have to fall back on the policy. If, if someone tried to filibuster a meeting or a group tried to filibuster a meeting, you know, that kind of thing, that does, that could occur.
You want to be...
Or comes to every single meeting to tell you the same complaint and they say, I want to come back every single meeting till you make this change. Well, you know what, why you want to give them that appropriate, whatever you also have.
Yeah, we can say...
It's a working group, because you have business to attend to every time, you charge a lot of money. All right, so, I will get that in, Ryan, can you tell me, let me know if there's...
Where the difference is?
If the difference is...
It's very, I mean, it's very minor, but I'll just, for instance, under number three, topics for discuss, discussion says must be limited and at MASC it says should be limited, I don't care about that. And then it says limited to those items listed on the school committee's scope of authority, but at MASC it says to those items within the school committee's scope of authority. That seems more appropriate to me, you say within rather than listed, we don't have that listed, our scope of authority. I don't know. And then in number two, speakers will be allowed three minutes, they have up to three minutes. That's also just makes sense.
Well, then...
Might be less than three minutes.
I didn't know if, it was that within, I think it should be changed, but I'm not, I'm not going to not vote for it.
Yeah, sure, but it's interesting.
I didn't see as good.
If there's any changes being made, I'd like to see that, but it's not absolutely necessary.
Yeah. Okay.
So, next meeting we will vote for those policies. Any other center updates if you have any?
I'll get the update on the, uh, basic instructional program.
There must be other laws or points to add. That's what we get to know, but, uh...
All right?
Okay. So, move on to reports, um, capital functions.
Do we have, do we have anything that we're putting in the warrants for the town for this school here? Want to refresh my memory?
Went to the Capitol Committee.
Just the, the roads and the floors, right?
You have the driveway and parking lot?
And the driveway, which I think is the big nut, the driveway.
For next year?
Oh, in terms of expenses, yes.
Yes.
And then also in the, there's sort of an A, B, and C tier in terms of how they view the urgency of those things and in the third tier is the efficiency, energy efficiency updates.
Was that talked about, what, at the last meeting when I wasn't here, about the warrant articles? I know we've been talking about the carpets right along and stuff like that, but I didn't, I never saw what the price tag was for, are we repairing or are we redoing the whole parking lot out front? How much it is, I, I don't think I ever saw...
Yeah, I think that came more through, to, um, hardware.
Yeah, there's a number in there, I don't know.
Right, the number that's currently in the workbook is, is eighty-five thousand dollars, but Keith, we're working with Keith on, make sure I'm right, school. Working with Keith on the estimates on that.
Okay.
Okay, and then...
Who's the new, the new capital, or the new building?
Bill.
Bill. So, Bill is working?
Bill's working with Keith on the estimates of that, but...
He's probably trying to incorporate when we do painting in town, try to get the chief as priced as possible.
That's exactly, that's exactly what they're doing. And when we put that forward, we also said if, we knew if we had to give them time to put this two years out, you know, try to last another year, you know, and follow them up.
Right, we, it's not urgent.
It's not urgent, but it is clearly getting worse and worse each year, so...
I know, the, the number that actually went in there was eighty-one thousand. Looking at things from the town.
Okay, good.
Yeah, sorry, but the public...
I think that was updated since then.
Oh, and also, removing the skylights from the...
Invitation was six.
Oh, was it at five thirty?
It's been Lincoln long time.
That was the one we were trying to tie, we were, efficiency, but I don't think that's...
Do we have a price tag on how much to remove them?
It says eight thousand, I personally not a favorite, but I understand.
Do they still leak?
Occasionally, but I thought it was a...
She likes a little rain inside, she likes to look through the light.
The light.
Well, so, if we remove the skylights, can we also remove the tinting of windows?
Yeah.
Would offset the loss of sunlight?
That, that is an issue, the tinting, I don't know.
Exterior windows or the exterior?
Our whole outside of the...
That was just added a couple of years ago.
I think Officer Carmichael would argue against that.
No, I, I was told it was his idea and when I, when I asked him about it, he said, mm-mm, they recommended, he said, we can recommend that.
It might be something we should look into because it does create some tension in building.
He had recommended the, the library windows and the cafeteria windows.
Being tinted?
Yeah, so that if someone came in the building...
Didn't we just have a conversation with them about the difference here?
Yeah, well, I think, if you're interested in the actual, I mean, going through...
But at nighttime with the lights on?
It's reversed.
It's the opposite.
You can see right in, clear.
And you can't see out.
Which is an issue in my mind.
The other idea was to do half, the bottom ones tenderly on top ones. Because then you have a natural light above.
Yeah, there's been much discussion, people said even if they just took the top quarter off and sliced it so there was one section.
So, do we have a problem with light during the day, even just?
It makes things a little bit darker.
We go out at the, you know, if you go out at the end of the day and you've been in the building all day, it's like, oh, it's been sunny on all day, I had, I had no idea. And when I, I talked to, I'm sure for Carmichael about it, he said, yeah, it's not something you would sort of enforce because it's a really expensive thing, most schools don't have the, they don't have the...
Do other schools in the district have it? Are we the only one?
It's a change, I think Frontier just want to have it.
It looks like it's just something that...
Like a...
Uh, we doesn't have that.
Does it come along?
No, 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 it's a...
Maybe we could ask Bill to look into, or I don't know if the right person is...
Well...
Like one, is it easy to...
Other than the problem in not putting light on, is it, is it a security thing that we did originally?
Yeah.
Yes, like we need to understand that.
Okay.
And I, I don't remember who the conversation was with, whether it was Conway or if it was him, was it Conway that... But it was about the preschool, right? The preschool is not...
It's right next to the...
And they're very exposed.
So, it's, it's to... And that it was a safety thing to do that.
Well, I know they gather the kids in the cafeteria, so they don't want to be able to see everything, which is an issue. I think it's still good to explore.
We'll see, we'll see, we'll see, tomorrow morning at nine o'clock.
Okay, well, there you go.
We can have a discussion.
Okay, so, committee chair, I don't have an update other than I thought we had a good meeting with the finance and select board last week or the week before and really wanted, encouraged us to think about if we had more resources, how would we invest those in the school to help move us from being great? I think that is a really good school, but I think we could be really great and so, I think we need to think about that. I've been doing some research, I'm hoping to bring you guys some thoughts. There's no, clearly no one answers, so it's not, there's no silver bullet, but it's good for us to be thinking about it.
Doing a lot of thinking about that.
Since we have receptive audience to help support the school.
From the finance, yeah.
Yeah, I think we want to really think about that for next year. Collaborative, I don't have any, no, I don't have any. That's cool.
Bless you.
Uh, we had a visit from the Frontier Regional Marching Band, which was awesome. Mr. Cheryl and his students did a wonderful job of bringing some rock and pop classics to our kids. One didn't even recognize it, some, but it was, it was awesome. And it's a really great chance for our little guys who are currently playing an instrument to, to see what the possibilities are in going forward up to Frontier and also for our, our youngest students to start to think about being able to play instruments. And we had our pancake breakfast this past weekend.
I was a day late and a dollar short, I was in, the first time, first time out of the house was Sunday, driving somewhere and we were heading, I think, down towards the Blue School, made a turn, I saw the signs, is that today? Because I wasn't at the last meeting and, you know.
Yeah.
Was it a good turnout?
It was good, it was well attended, um, with school families and also with the general town. And we have a, a pretty solid core of parents who are very dedicated to that, that particular event, the pancake breakfast and it takes, as you know, a lot of time.
I'll be using some of them for next year, some of the parents that help out, yeah, their children will be moving in.
Yeah, that's unfortunate.
They used to be one of my favorites doing the pancake, pancake breakfast, oh yeah, cooking. All that sausage and bacon.
If you want to cook that in now.
That kid just smelled like bacon for like a week, you know?
They could always use help, so always.
You're welcome to come back.
I'll be content.
I used to do that, the spaghetti dinner, I remember making up ten or fifteen pounds of spaghetti in that big vat, stirring it.
I'm going to put that in the, the meeting minutes that you're, you know, I'm volunteering here for next year. It was a really, it was a great event, the fourth grade does a basket rattle to raise funds for their trip to the Roger Green Zoo. It was just, it was the next day and the weather cooperated with us, it wasn't very cold, so, um, it was a, it was a nice day. Last week I began accepting applications for our kindergarten position, um, to fill the position that's being vacated by Vicky Satek who's retiring. It was shared internally and then put on school spring and in two weeks the hiring team will meet and look at the applications we've received so far and then develop our schedule for interviews. After being up for less than a week, I have a lot of applications, so there's, there's good interest.
It's a good school, remember?
It's an excellent school.
Excellent school.
Fifth grade will be heading off to nature's classroom on March thirty-first and returning on April third. This will be the first year we're doing it in the spring rather than the fall and the rationale behind that was to give students and teachers additional time to get to know one another so that we can maybe alleviate some of the anxiety that comes with possibly being your first sleepaway from home. I thought it was interesting last year, being my first year, that the kids, I think it was the fourth day of school, they got on the bus and they, and they left and I was very confused by that and we had two brand-new students who had moved in from fairly far away, didn't know anyone, didn't know the teachers, didn't know the kids. They did it and it was fine, but without moving it to the spring might help with some of that, so we'll see.
Are we doing it with other schools still?
Yeah, the other four schools. And then on March sixteenth, we have our marionette show, so I put the information on there so that you can all join us if you, if you'd like.
I also want to add, spaghetti supper will be Saturday, April fourth. It's a fundraiser for sixth grades, giving trips and...
Folks, I heard. And Bob already volunteered for the spaghetti, I saw him do this, so...
What day was that, April fourth?
April fourth, Saturday. I'm not sure the time is right.
Probably a couple CDs.
Yeah, yeah.
Any questions for the principal?
I don't, no, not the principal.
No, the committee, yes. The next meeting is the joint meeting in April and it's the same night as the band contest.
Yeah, I did bring that up.
They are working on it.
The meeting or the council?
Seriously?
Yeah.
Try to get five school community meetings together in one night. That's tough. I'm backing you up on this now.
Versus high schools. Leave that to you guys. Superintendent update, can you set something up?
The, uh, what do I have, the, yeah, what is it? So, first thing obviously hot on the ticket was the, uh, the coronavirus. I sent out a message to families, I'm keeping up the website updated. The meeting tomorrow morning with the four-town safety committee and every sort of, you know, Frank County health people to just talk about what, how the planning is moving forward on that, should we, we'll be prepared, not panic, that kind of thing. It also is affecting, you know, Frontier's, you know, three international trips. Governor Baker came out today and said basically recommending that all of those be canceled, so we're discussing about postponing and so they're, you know, how to work through it. So, it's taking up a lot of time and that kind of thing and a lot of time and obviously worry and that kind of stuff. Just letting you know that that's taking place and if you have questions about, you know, what we're doing and that kind of stuff, like I said, we're pretty involved in the website, there for families and such as well.
I like the video.
Yeah. The, um, the next thing is the, we're kind of back with the negotiations for the teachers. Right now we're doing a table talk, which came out of the, the previous negotiation to have discussions about the, the numbers and rather than going back and forth in the large kind of crowd or in a kind of more, to hopefully be able to bring back to the full committee a discussion starting point. So, it's a non-binding discussion table that, again, is, this came out of the, the committee, both sides kind of, kind of being in that deadlock and so being able to get each other's thoughts across, let's get to a small group and see that we can have a difference of opinion and just be able to talk about it without thinking of the next step. Or being committed to the next step, we're all thinking of the next step. The next one is I hand, I gave a handout and I sent you guys the link from the website regarding, but SOA, the Student Opportunity Act, has strings attached to it. So, basically for chapter seventy money, the state is requiring us to submit a...
Basically, well, you can, that's my chapter seventy money, please.
Here?
Here.
Two thousand three hundred seventy dollars?
So, yeah, right there, two thousand, just over two thousand dollars. We have to fill a form and I had to bring it back to all of you. And I gotta do a separate one in each district of our five districts to explain how I'm gonna use the two thousand dollars of that extra chapter seventy money to work on this. And they said, well, not just the extra money, but how are you using all the chapter seventy money to go into this? You know, basically, the law has language in it that makes schools accountable to the additional money to address the right. We didn't get any really to help us. You know, two thousand dollars isn't even, is, you know, doesn't do any kind of anything, coal, coal movement within our budget. So, anyway, so that'll be presented at the joint meeting. Kim McCarthy's putting that together and Sarah, we're just putting it together as well. So, it will be presented there. But I'm just kinda stating that it is gonna be after the April first. Per the program, they said, go ahead and submit it without school committee approval, although you have to have school committee approval with it. So, they clearly are not that serious about, I think, to be fair to Desi, I think they're just trying to keep up. They really are concerned about the thirty-five schools that received a lot more money. Everybody else just received thirty dollars per student, per people thing, so that's for the two thousand.
Yeah, I've said multiple times in that letter to keep it concise.
Yes, they're trying to, they're trying to do it there, but my cynical side gets that it's a larger big brother. I mean, this can be part of other reports for accountability to the chapter seventy money they've been, we've been receiving since nineteen eighty and been going down, down since nineteen eighty. And more local burden, and now they're, they just have more accountability to the less money they send us each year, but.
Do you guys guess how many are up at workshop on the chapter seventy money on Monday? Are people gonna go to that? I'm out of town, I'm hoping to go. I, I said I was going, but I haven't checked the home schedule yet.
Seems like that might be a good opportunity to talk about some of those things.
I have several members that are going to.
Cause Joyce made a really good point in our meeting about how chapter seventy money, we get less per student than we do per school choice kids in the district. So, I think that, that was the first time I actually heard that. I didn't really realize it was that.
So, if we get a student, we'll, we'll double, one student will double the increase that we get in chapter seventy. You don't wanna look at finances ever, but it is a good segue to your public hearing.
Yeah, it is a good thing for us to keep in mind, to push the, our state reps and things on to try and help us. So, we'll move to the hearing unless there's anything else.
Do we have to go into executive session afterwards for?
Nope, it's gonna be, but that's gonna stay on there throughout negotiations. It's your negotiations, if you ever wanna talk about it, you can ask me.
So, there's, so you already checked what you.
Can you give me like two minutes? Stretch. I'm locked up here. What did that happen?
New replacement two and a half weeks ago.
Really?
See what happens if you join this committee?
Oh, my gosh. No fun.
Kim, what's the date for that chapter seventy?
It's Monday tonight at the JFK Middle School, which is nice. I really wish I was gonna be in town to go. And it looks like Joe Comiford's gonna be there and someone from MASC is gonna come and talk about sort of how it works.
And Laura Fallon? Yeah, she is on North Hampton School Committee. She is now the delegate leader.
For our area?
Yeah. District five. That's new, and she's going on some trip to DC as part of that.
Shelley and I are meeting with the, all those area state reps and senators on Friday. It was a roundtable of superintendents and then to talk about the funding and what we're getting, what we're not getting. They know that, they've already come out to, they came out to Sunderland a few weeks ago. So, you know, they've heard that aside of it, but we're kinda sitting down, talking about, a lot of the stuff that came from that, into that bill was because of these conversations about, you know, things like, you know, foster care and transportation of foster students and, you know, those kind of things. There's some, you know, some districts that get really hit, but there's, you know, the, the state doesn't see in these kind of finite areas. So, like I said, so we have a luncheon of the three.
The more dialogue, the better and keep them informed. Okay, you ready?
Yeah, I'm good for a little bit.
So, I have a little script here that I've been given to follow for the hearing, which is that we need to take a roll call. So, one is just, we're calling the hearing to order, right, at six ten. We have to do a roll call, so Bob?
Yes.
Ella?
More.
Marius. And I just wanted to make sure everyone knows this is being recorded, which I should probably have said at the beginning of the meeting, but we are always recorders, so know that. And wanna invite people to speak. If there's anyone wants to speak on the budget, we have one guest here. This is your chance to share your thoughts on the FY nineteen, or FY twenty-one budget.
Okay, so you'd like me to go first versus your, although I've already occurred it.
Yeah, well, I don't think we were planning to really revisit the budget at this point.
Maybe just do the, in summary, we're proposing.
Shelley do a quick summary for everybody.
Well, it is a public hearing, so I imagine people will watch this, will wanna know.
It's the same budget from last meeting, the same budget we presented at your meeting, which was also on TV, so go to YouTube, go back to. But just, me, Shelley, you just give the quick, give the quick numbers.
Give the quick summary of where things are.
Yep, so we are looking at a two point five one percent increase for Waitley Elementary School for FY twenty-one. That is a forty-four thousand eight hundred twenty-seven dollar increase for a total town appropriation of one million eight hundred thirty dollars and thirteen cents. And that is just for the general fund, so just our local budget, does not include other funding sources. With our other funding sources, we're looking at a two million two hundred eleven dollars, six hundred fifty, I said that wrong, eleven thousand, six hundred fifty dollars for total funding, which includes school choice, early childhood revenues, any grant funding that we might get, et cetera.
So, it's in the top line and then the bottom as well, it gives you the general fund and the total. Uh, so.
So, the primary increase is due to salary and wage increases. There were some changes in certain function areas that increased expenditures. However, we also decreased expenditures, so the net increase to anything that's not salary related is very minimal. A couple of things to highlight, cause they were more significant, is that we brought three thousand dollars back onto local fund that was previously funded from a grant for teacher mentor stipends. Sped contract services, which is if we need any consultation services for special education students, we added five thousand dollars to cover those costs. And then we did increase the technology instructional hardware and software by four thousand six hundred, based on the needs of the school and the IT department in order to maintain our technology to the highest standards. Major decreases include reduction in separation costs due to no retirement payouts in FY twenty-one, so that was almost a nine thousand dollar decrease. And then there were some other minor decreases to other function lines that, you know, totaled about six thousand dollars. Again, largest increase to the general fund is salaries and wages, so we're looking at approximately forty-two thousand six hundred dollars for potential teacher salary increases. Contract is not settled, we're still in negotiations, so that could fluctuate, but we have a percentage increase built in there for COLA and includes COLA and step movement. The IA salaries are settled on their contracts, so that is an eight thousand seven hundred dollar increase, which includes COLA and any step movement. And then we also have wage increases included for non-union personnel, such as administration, principal, secretaries, central office staff. That actually brought a reduction to Waitley's budget due to a cost sharing percentage change, as well as some personnel changes in central office and administration. Those are the major headlines. Happy to answer questions or comments?
It's a little different from last year, where we were trying to save a full-time position. We were at five and a half last year, and we're grateful that the town allowed us to keep that full-time employee and have a little higher percentage. So, I was kinda happy, and coming back this year with almost a perfect two and a half, which I, I thought was great too, on Shelley and everybody else's part too, so.
And the school choice, maybe just summarize where we are on that, cause that was, again, an important part of last year's discussion.
So, our school choice revenue looks to be down for FY twenty-one. We had a few students leave, which included a student who was receiving special education increment. However, we are in a healthy position with school choice still. Let me find it so I can tell you what we're looking at for year end. We're talking about spending a year in a rear at this point. So, FY twenty-one, I mean, I'm sorry, at the end of FY twenty, we are looking at having a balance of two hundred and nineteen thousand in our school choice expenditures. And at the end of FY twenty-one, having a balance of a hundred and seventy-three thousand. So, we're spending a little bit of our surplus and spending a little bit more than our anticipated revenue. However, we'll still be in a really healthy position.
And as we've learned this year, a lot of things changed along the year, so as long as we plan to try and keep a surplus of a full year, that's a good goal for the preschool. And we are, the other, only other comment I wanna say is the preschool is doing really well and we're, have good revenue there, so we are able to push a little more of their expenses off to the preschool, which is also what's helping us keep the budget relatively low this year. So, we need to be mindful of that and make sure that we're not pushing too much onto the preschool.
Can you, can you tell me what we pay out of that revolving fund for salaries or whatever?
For early childhood?
Yeah, I mean, just the, people wanna know.
It's on that list that you have at the very last page.
In here?
It is, but it, yeah, it's, it's.
Might be a little different.
I, I'm happy to pull it up quickly too, but you can certainly look in there.
The bottom line, one of the columns is EC.
Yeah, so it tells you, this is the total, but that's not all. There is a little bit of expenses in there for supplies and materials. It's primarily salaries and wages, which is, that's his ninety-five thousand almost.
I just didn't know if, I know we try to pick up a little bit more of the year, as long as we have a plentiful balance there that we could take more off of other things, whether we're paying out of school choice, uh, the regular budget for salaries, you know, are we, are we taking more, are we taking more out of that revolving fund to pay for salaries? I mean.
Only the preschool salaries.
That's what I'm talking about, I'm just talking about preschool.
But I think one of the challenges is in, in having the full day preschool, we have to hire more people to, to run it. So, we're sort of trying to not put that burden on the, on the school.
That's what I'm talking about, I mean.
To pay for the, that's my understanding of how we're thinking about that. And we're able to do that pretty comfortably right now. It's not all the salaries, cause some, some of the teachers were here before we started preschool, but we're trying to fund some of those extra costs.
So, the program is anticipated to have about a hundred and twenty thousand in salaries next year, of which ninety-five will be paid from the revolving fund. So, there's a very small portion that's on this budget. And as Katie said, you have to be a little bit careful with that, you don't wanna over expend it. You know, preschool is one of those fluid classrooms where, you know, we have an idea of who's coming and going, but people also have a lot of choices for preschool. So, we certainly want them to be left with a healthy surplus at the end of the year, so that if there are any unforeseen circumstances, we do have some money saved up. But we are, it's, it's nearly funding itself.
Which is, which is really nice.
Which should hopefully help also bring a pipeline to the school longer term.
I mean, the more things that we do throughout the school, put more things back into the budgets where we are having, spending a lot of the school choice money for different things. Where I'm a firm believer back, since I've been here so long, I remember the days where we were, we were spending, I won't break up the, the computer lab, but we were able to spend fifty thousand dollars on a computer lab for the kids. It's not paying a salary, it's something for all the kids could use and stuff. And that's what I'd love to do is more, if in the future, if we do get more school choice kids, is to take more of that money and use that money for the kids instead of paying for a salary, unless we get in the bind or something like that.
Yeah, I mean, we, we definitely have salaries on school choice. And I don't think we're gonna avoid that, given the amount of salaries that are here. But you're right, if we can move anything that's a recurring expense onto general fund, we should look at that. And it should be used for, you know, perhaps some of those one-time expenditures, that instead of putting in capital requests or warrants, you know, things like that. But, you know, it's, it's, it's hard for all of our small elementary schools to absorb all of the costs that are.
Cause I know, all it takes is one poor kid that comes in here that needs extra help and all the extra money that we have is, is gonna be take, taking up with them, which we're, we're gonna do. I mean, we're obligated to take care of whoever comes in that front door from our town. And if it comes in from another town, their school choice, that town will pay for.
That goes to the other conversation of working with the representatives of the state to really help everybody manage those costs.
Don't forget, school choice has probably been at five thousand as long as I remember. And I'm not even sure what year school choice even started at five thousand. Everything else has gone up, except for school choice.
Or chapter seventy. But anyway, we don't need to get into all that. Great, well, I also wanna acknowledge and recognize all the good leadership and management that's been going on at these different areas by Chrissy and by Shelley. And then the school lunch is another example of a program that's really thriving and doing well, and we're able to find itself relatively fully now, which is a big change from a few years ago, so.
Yeah, and I, I've left that in for FY twenty-one on local budget in the event that, again, we have some unforeseen circumstance or the program isn't as healthy, again, next year, but they seem to be really.
But it seems like it's doing really well here. That's great, keep it up. Okay, now we're ready for comments, sorry. Thank you.
Paul, you're gonna go easy on us this year?
Look, I wanna thank you first for the invitation, and I wish there were more that followed me in. But prime reason I came tonight, one, was to listen to the public, to your presentation. And the second sort of dovetails to what Katie spoke to a short time ago about excellence in the school and what also Bob spoke to regarding programming and things we can put direct to student. I think a couple of things make people uneasy about the educational budget. And specifically that, look, a two point five one percent increase, you know, everybody loves that on the pocketbook, it's not a stretch. But on the value side, are we getting what we have? Things kinda, you know, come on, two percent increase, things are kinda going in the same direction, not, not that it's bad, okay? But how do we, how do we set this school apart? How do we make this school a little more attractive, okay? And, and I think, first, it starts with goals. And if I was there and we, and we had this meeting on that camera, I'd be using that whiteboard. And there'd be goals, and there'd be how we got to the, how, how we plan to get to, to those goals. And those goals represent why we're asking you for more money, okay? But when you don't ask for more money, people sit back and they say, well, I don't think there are any great goals. It just kinda keep things, not that things are bad, things are good, but those far-reaching goals aren't there. And we would kinda like to see that. I know a lot of people would like to see that. A lot of people would like to see no increase. But I think from a value perspective, we're paying two-plus million dollars to keep this school going. Best economy we've had in my lifetime. If you can't get more money out of this economy, then, you know, I think you're gonna look around and just start to ask. But we depend on the experts to say, we need this amount of money to put this program in place so that your students, your kids are better prepared to go to Frontier, to go to the middle school, or to go to a private school, wherever they wanna go. But we know, when they get into that environment, it's like hot knife through butter, they've got it. I don't know if we have that right now, and, but I think it's achievable, and I think you gotta ask for it. And not that I'm trying to drive the budget up, I'm trying to drive value with this. So, with that said, I have only one suggestion regarding programming or in addition to what we have here at the school. And that would be to do some research into a climbing wall for the gymnasium. And I've been to another, I've been to a number of gyms throughout the area, and a number of them have these climbing walls. And it seems to me, in this environment, long winters, we don't have pools, we don't have ice rinks, you gotta give them something else. And I think a climbing wall might be something that we should look into. Now, I spoke to the phys ed guy here.
Mr. Karen?
Yeah, on Saturday, and he told me that he has advocated for it and actually asked for it in the past, and nothing ever came of it. So, I would highly, whether it comes from town funds, whether it comes, whether the PTO does some kind of fundraising, to put it together, I would strongly encourage that it's one thing. Kids see it right away, kids get excited about it, kids can accomplish something in one class and feel good about themselves. Now, if you go to the Hatfield Elementary School, they've got a great wall, and it's just very well done. So, so that's, that's just the only comment that, that I have regarding a value, to come back to the school. Other than that, I would also advocate that we keep a close eye on sped, special education, to, total costs in the school. Special education is here, we've lived with it for a long time, it's become, it's become the norm, it's part of our vernacular. And there was a time when it was split out, everybody was looking at sped costs. Today, we look at the charter cost, we look, we look at school of choice cost. In five years, I think the same thing will happen, charter school and sped, and, you know, school of choice will just be, you know, part of what we do. And we'll kinda lose that, and we'll get intertwined with all the other costs. So, I would strongly recommend that, and there is talk and there is concern that we don't look at costs within the classroom and without, outside of the classroom. We, we have two point two million dollars, how much of that is directly spent in the classroom? Kid, teacher, books, computer, whatever you wanna say, what does that cost in that pie, that two point two million dollar pie? How much of that pie goes directly to student education? That's something that I think we should look at, and I think we should track over time. I'm done. So, I mean, I'd be willing to.
Are you sure?
Kick, kick, kick that around, yeah, I'm done.
You sure? Last night you went a long time, you were bussing around with your bunnies last night from the other towns. I mean, we're happy that you came, Paul, wish more people, I wasn't at the public meeting, I just, I was gonna try to come last Tuesday night.
Understand.
I didn't have enough strength to make it there and stuff, but I, my only question to you, you know, you're the one that's here. How's all the other finance people looking at this? They got plenty of time, right? The budget, the increase and the whole thing, was there any complaints about that or?
I think everybody's happy, I, I think, you know, it's always, it's never the meeting, it's always the meeting after the meeting. Those little meetings, or little sidebars, little conversations. And I think some of what I shared with you tonight was, was, came out of some of that. And I'm not just, I'm not here as someone representing the finance committee, but I'm a taxpayer. And I'm grandfather, I got my kids in this, my grandkids here. So.
One of them was standing outside watching most of the time. She went back inside.
Oh, really?
He didn't look around.
One clarification on the sped, what is, the reasons to watch the sped, keep a close eye on this?
Well, we, there was a time.
To have a better understanding.
There was a time when we had us, it was broken out. You saw all sped costs versus non-sped mainstream costs, or however you wanna term it. But today, it's kinda interwoven into a lot of different areas and, and, which is, I mean, which is, if that's how you have to do the accounting, fine. But from a layperson looking at what's going on, where, where, where are the dollars going? And, and that, I think we have particular interest in that.
Years ago, it used to be, how come you're never spending that school choice money? All you've got, all you finance guys.
Well, yeah, yeah.
You get all this money, but we also used to say, back then, we weren't taking, in the future, we were paying, we were having extra money that year. And what are you gonna do with it? How come you're not putting it in the, in the budget? And when our person, if that pipe broke, it was a cold night or this and that, we wouldn't go back to you guys or the town to get money. We'd be going to school choice, cause we had a little bit of a rainy day fund in school choice. And that's, you know, I'm a still firm believer, having a little bit for a rainy day to help out whenever we can. And I just, some years we can, some years we can't.
No question that there have been times that were very tight, but if, but if you recall those times, if you look at the economy and you look at the interest rates, you're talking late eighties, nineties, well, we had interest rates that was through the roof. And there was very little optimism in terms of the economy. Today, the economy's flying. Things are good. If you're gonna ask for money, you know, it's now.
And a town needs a good school to thrive, so we need to be partner.
It's a direct correlation between, between the value of your home and your land and the quality of the school in that town.
So, I just wanted to say thank you to the finance committee and also the select board for their partnership, cause I think the dialogue has, has been very helpful and good, and I hope that we can all continue to work together.
And we're very happy and proud, in fact, you know, the accomplishment that the school made in regards to the standards in the state. I, I think it's a big deal.
Yeah.
Okay, others may not think. That's the elementary school. So, yeah, I mean, I think it's a big deal. You know, others may not agree with the criteria or, or, or any of the, you know, the, maybe the outcomes. The fact of the matter is, you're gonna live in that environment and you, you move the needle in that environment. So, hats off to you.
Celebrate that.
We'd like to see it continue.
It's one piece of.
It's one, right.
There are places where that is, that is the piece that overwhelms everything else. And one of the great things about being here is it's just one piece of a fairly low-round experience.
So, all right.
Great, well, thank you.
Go ahead, Paul.
Thank you. So, I think we're all set on our budget then, and we may never move forward on the minute we get to vote on it?
I'll make a motion to approve this year's budget of two million two hundred eleven thousand six hundred fifty. One million eight hundred thirty thousand.
Good job, everybody.
Good job.
But during the meeting, exactly an hour later, six thirty to eight.